Yes, I'm fine with that, yes. Whatever you guys want.
Yeah.
Hi. I'm in. Hi. Are you the help? Okay. Oh. Yeah. Hi. Oh. Yeah, that's right. I like my shirt. I like my shirt, too. Do you have a pen?
Yes.
A pen. Hey, how are you? Good to see you. You know, right? Should I have a?
Chat, it's not on.
Scott? Scott? Are these going to be turned on? They're not on. I can't hear you. Oh. Don't go back yet. Just making sure. We don't want to have a hot mic. I know.
Left handed or right handed?
Left handed.
It's right there for both of us.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Ames Tribune's Forum for Candidates Running for Ames School Board. Tonight, we will discuss issues of importance to the district and the students it serves, and hear from the four candidates who are on the ballot in next Tuesday's school board election. I am Michael Crum, the editor of the Ames Tribune, and next to me is the Tribune's publisher, Scott Anderson. We at the Tribune believe the education of a community's students is a top priority, not only for the school district, but for the community as a whole, and we encourage everyone who is eligible to vote in next Tuesday's election. Thank you for joining us tonight. We will be live streaming tonight's forum on our Facebook page. We will have a full story in tomorrow's paper and look for full election coverage in Sunday's Ames Tribune. The candidates on the ballot are incumbent Tim Rasmussen, who will be seeking his second term on the school board, Jamet Colton, Monique Benkin, and Gina Perez, who are all first-time candidates for the board. The format we will follow this evening is as follows: We will give each candidate two minutes to introduce themselves at the start of the forum, and another one minute for a closing statement at the end. In between, we'll be asking questions on behalf of the Tribune and read questions submitted by those here in the audience. By the doors you came in, there's a table with index cards and pens. You can write your questions down there and drop them in the orange box that's back there on the table. We would ask that if you haven't already filled out a question, that when you do, to write down your name, what your question is, and if you are here supporting the candidate or have a particular affiliation with them. Candidates will be given 90 seconds to answer questions. We will reserve the right to ask any follow-up questions that we feel may be needed to better clarify an answer that is given. And again, we thank you for joining us tonight, and now let's get the evening started.
All right, well, we can start with a two-minute opening statement from each of you. We'll start with Monique. Two minutes, and then we'll just work over that way, and then we'll get the questions.
Is there a timer? Who's timing?
That's me.
Okay.
So you'll see I'll hold up my time when you're -- you have 30 seconds left, but I'm sure you're assigned.
Fair enough. Okay, well, hello. What? Hello. Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. It is a beautiful evening, so I really appreciate that you guys are out here engaging in the process. I'd also like to thank the Ames Tribune for hosting this event and giving us an opportunity to share our vision for the school board with the community. My name is Monique Benkin. I am an assistant professor at Iowa State University. I'm here with my husband, Brian. We've been married for 22 years. We are here in Ames from Houston, Texas. We moved here in 2009 and made Ames our home. I work at Iowa State University. I came here with my background in training in psychology and the law. I completed a joint J.D. Ph.D. program in psychology and the law, and at Iowa State, I study the ways in which children with psychiatric disorder encounter the legal system. I have been doing this for a while, and what I find is that people tend to have three questions for me. They ask me, "Do you have children in the district? Why on earth are you doing this? And what will you do if you get elected?" So I would like to address those in my statement. My husband and I have two children in the district. They are at Sawyer Elementary. They have been educated exclusively here in the Ames community. Why I'm doing this is a little bit longer of an answer, although I don't have much time. I'm doing this because, as someone who loves the law and loves politics, what I saw at the national stage was really just something I knew I couldn't leave to our children, and so I decided it was time to me become more active in my own community, and so that's why I decided to do this. And what I would do is I would advocate for diverse perspectives in the community. I would advocate for using dialogue to communicate openly and honestly with the community, and I would push for the use of data-driven, evidence-based practices in all of the decisions that the board makes in approaching the challenges here. So I would ask for your vote on September 12, but I guess I've got to earn it, so I've got some questions to answer. Thank you very much.
Jamet?
Hello. I gotta admit it, this is a bit of a teaser, having us sitting here, like, pretending, so it's pretty cool. I am Jamet Colton. I'm originally from Santiago, Chile. I came to Ames 17 years ago. I live here with my husband, Chase, and our son, Tiago. He's 10 years old. He's in fifth grade. I have been involved with the community in the past 17 years, but I've been volunteer here and there, but when I became a citizen in 2014, I felt like a call to get more involved in the community, and I'd started working with marginalized communities, with the school district in different aspects. So I, because of my work in the community with equity and inclusion, I was honored to receive the 2017 Ames Humanitarian Award. It was an honor to me. And I work at the district as an educational assistant, and I interpret for Spanish and Spanish-speaking families, and I am running because I want to strengthen the board's relationship with the community. I want to broaden the perspective of the board. I think it's important to have representation from all walks of life, from all backgrounds, and I can bring that. And I also want to bring to the table voices that are not always heard, or they are marginalized. And I hope you like what you hear today, and I would love to have your vote on September 12. Thank you.
Gina?
Hi. I'm Gina Perez, and I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. This is wonderful, and thank you to the Tribune for inviting all of us here. I do want to say that Tim already warned me I had better not touch the gavel that's back here, so if he smacks at me, it's just because I'm going for the gavel. Yeah, it's right there. I've been in Ames for 16 years. I live here with my husband, Jose, and our two kids, Ian and Gabe, they're 12 and seven, and the oldest, the 12-year-old, goes to the middle school, and the youngest goes to Meeker. I have worked at the Iowa DOT for over 10 years. I work in IT, so I'm a STEM girl, and I have a lot of experience as well with project management, process improvement, and I do a lot of facilitation, getting people to talk to each other. I went back to school and graduated with a degree in business management two years ago. I had a lot of support from my family and my friends, and it was a wonderful, wonderful experience to do as an adult. In my family, I have three siblings and both of my parents that are either current or retired teachers, so I'm very familiar with what teachers do on a daily basis, how much money you spend on your kids, how much you care about them when you go home. I grew up in Wisconsin, and two of my three siblings were teachers in Wisconsin when collective bargaining changed. I saw what happened with them, and I'm very concerned, and I want to make sure that our teachers feel validated, valued, and secure. I would like to work on, with my facilitation experience, communication between the board and the public, as well as between the school board and the city. There is always room to work on those relationships together. So, thank you again. I'm Gina Perez. Have a good night.
Thank you. Tim?
I'm Tim Rasmussen. I'm pretty much a lifelong resident of Ames, having attended Kate Mitchell, the Old Welch Junior High. Eighty-two graduate from Ames High School, went on to Iowa State to get a degree in elementary education, and then taught for six years. Fifth grade most of those years. Three sons. The two of them are at Iowa State now that have graduated from Ames High. They're both in the design college, and then a sophomore son at Ames High School currently. Four years ago, I decided after all of the great things that this school district had done for me, and, you know, I would not be here if it wasn't for the great teachers at Kate Mitchell Elementary School when I was there, that I needed to give something back, and I decided that with a degree in education, this was the best way that I could do it, was to serve on school board. And so I ran for school board and was elected four years ago. That doesn't really matter now, because in the next four years, we're going to make a lot of much bigger decisions. We're going to have a new superintendent to hire in the school district. We are going to bring forth a bond issue, and the voters will have to decide if they want to support a new high school or not. We have a racial disparity gap plan that is being enacted that could make some big changes for all students in this school district, and I want to be there for those four years to help support those three initiatives and see all three of those things through some of the activities that I started when I became on this board. Thank you.
Thirty seconds to spare. Time management right there.
Most efficient speaker on the board right now.
Well, we'll jump into the questions, and once again, you have 90 seconds, or a minute and a half, however you want to look at it, to answer the question. And Jamet, we'll start with you, and the question will be posted up here as well, so you can all look at it. So the first question is about the achievement gap. So several school board candidates have expressed interest in the district hiring an equity officer -- I can hardly see it -- to oversee the work to reduce racial disparities. Should that be the next step, or is there another option you would like the district to consider, and why? Jamet?
All right. Let's do this. I think that would be a great solution, because then we would have somebody that is in charge of that, and then it would also -- there are a number of inequities. It's not just -- it doesn't only fall on the achievement gap. It's also special needs students, whether they're getting what they need in the classrooms to succeed. So this director, I think it would be a great idea, whether we can afford it or not, that would be the biggest question. So I would really like to study that, whether we can afford it, and if we can, I say absolutely, let's do it. This is -- there are many districts in Iowa they're doing. Iowa City has one, Davenport has one, Des Moines has one, I think, and they've done -- for instance, I think Davenport, they're -- it's been, like, they're ahead of us by two years. So I think if this is -- I think that'd be a great vote for us to take. Yes.
All right, Gina?
I would love to see an equity officer here in the district. I also want to look at the finances for the district, because I know that there has been money cut every year, and there's more money that's being cut at both the state and the federal level, so it has to be something that we can afford, and if we can't afford it, that would be wonderful. If it's even close, I mean, we might be able to find ways to creatively come up with a solution. So I'd like to, but it depends.
Tim? Same question to you, Tim.
I will echo, you know, some of the things that they've actually said on this. I mean, this, if we can work this into the budget, it would be a great addition to the staff. If there are a lot of items that fall into the workload of our principals to oversee some of these items, and as a -- without this position, I'm sure in the next few years that there are going to be more items like that that are added to the workload of all the principals if we do not have this position, because we're going to ask for some -- the board, I'm pretty confident, is going to ask for more oversight of some of the equity positions of this district. We have very few black students that are put into the advanced math class in our middle school due to some decisions that were recommended a few years ago, and we've got to remedy that, and that's something that could fall on the equity officer to make sure that happens. If it doesn't fall on the equity officer, it's going to be on the middle school principal, who is already very stretched, and so it'd be a great addition if we can work it into the budget. Certainly, one of the things that works into that budget situation is that the state is considering continuously opening up our school budget. They have everything siloed into different pockets of money that we can't touch, and there's been some inroads that the state might open some of that up, which would certainly give us a chance to add an important position like this.
Monique, same question.
So one of the things that I do in my job at Iowa State is I help state and local entities design interventions for racial and ethnic disproportionality within complex systems, and so I am actually one of the candidates you referenced in the question who is advocating for an equity director. So certainly, we need to have an equity office and an equity officer, but I would disagree that that's the next step. I think there are several things that need to happen before we get there if we're going to start really making an effective intervention that has long-term impact. I think the work that the district is doing right now with the professional development team from Iowa State is a really good start. I don't think that we have a really clear conceptualization of what the issue is and how we should move forward as a district. I also don't think that we have a clear goal in mind or clear benchmarks of what we need to be doing, and so I think the conversation about where an equity officer should fit and the timing of that needs to happen, and I think part of the reason I think that is because, as Jamet hit on a little bit and Tim kind of commented on, this isn't an issue about black students. There are several students in our district who are evidencing disproportionate achievement. They are children of racial and ethnic background, but they're also children on free and reduced lunch, IEPs, early English language learners, and so we really need to get a better understanding of not just bringing someone in to kind of handle the black students. It's really not the appropriate task, and what I would also say is we can't not afford to do this work.
We're going to go to a question from the audience. When teachers, parents, administrators, community members, school board members say "we need to do what's best for the kids," who gets to decide that? Gina, let's start with you.
I think that the first group of people that should be talked to about that is the public. The public has the kids that go to the schools, and who knows better what's better for their kids than the parents of the kids and other individuals within Iowa State that specialize in this? That is where I would start.
Tim, same question.
Part of that goes to what has been my leadership style for my years on the board and all my years managing recently successful business in this town, is that I leave a lot of these decisions up to the people that are on the front line with things. There have been some changes that I've wanted to see implemented over the last four years within this district, and I've talked to the people that could get those changes made, talked to them about what could be done, and let them run with it and come back with a plan and present it to the full board. I've never taken any item and decided that I'm going to be very heavy-handed and force it through a board vote and force it on the teachers, because it needs to be the teachers that are bringing any of our programming forward, and that has been a very constant leadership style for me.
Well, I think the answer to that is obvious. It's why we're all here tonight, right? The board, frankly, is where the buck stops in determining what's best for our children. And I think the real question is, how does the board work with the community and the frontline people who service our children to make sure that the board is really setting the appropriate goals and standards? And so that really gets at this issue of dialogue and collaboration. What you must have, because, I mean, what we're really talking about is representative government. That's why we're doing this, right? We are in the midst of a representative government, and the community entrusts seven people here to be making the decision about what's in the best interest of their children, and so what I hope you expect is a board that does not make those decisions in a vacuum, but really understands how community input, even if you don't have children in the school, even if your child is just in preschool, you know, and everybody in between, is really important, because I can't be everywhere. I don't know everything. Primary and secondary education is not my expertise, and so we really need to build this funnel, this lane of communication through a variety of avenues, so that we can be in the position to make the best decision for all children in the district.
The board sets the tone. The board sets the leadership. That's why I'm running. I'm running because I am interested in policymaking. I want to see changes in the policymaking stage, and the community is involved. We get input from the community. That's another reason why I'm running. I want to strengthen the relationship with the city, with ISU, and all of us together were doing this. The board needs to set the tone. This matters. So when something comes up, we, the board, set the tone, and we, let's say, we talk about bullying LGBTQ students. We had a question like that that came up on the APA forum. The board sets the tone. The board says, "I want you to know. I want to know what's going on." We are zero tolerance. This is what we are here for that. I'm here for that. I'm here for policymaking. Thank you.
All right. One more question. I want to remind the audience, if you have any questions, feel free to go submit them in the orange bucket over there. Bright orange, you can't miss it. I would love to get as many questions as possible. So, the next question is about the new high school. So, are you willing to put the issue on the ballot if you're elected? What options, what are options a district should consider if a bond measure fails? Tim, I believe this is you to start this one.
I have been on record as, without a doubt, saying that I support bringing this bond issue forward and letting the people decide. If we can get 60% plus one to vote for a new high school, then we should build it. We are in great financial condition in this school district. We can bond up to $191 million without raising property taxes. We're not going to come anywhere close to $191 million. We're without a pool as part of the project. It's somewhere around $100 million, maybe $115 if we had the pool, so the finances are there, and so I fully support doing that. If we don't build a new high school, the high school that we have currently is going to cost the district somewhere around $30 million over the next 10 years just to do repairs. It's like driving a car that you've got 150,000 miles on, and it's costing you $250 a month to do the repairs on it. The times come to go get a new car. You can have a new car for the same payment, so we, the times come. I have not considered if the bond issue fails. If it does, we'll make a plan and we'll figure out what to do, but I believe there is pretty strong support in this town for a new high school, and I fully envision that if we bring the right bond forward, that it will pass.
Monique?
So when I was in law school, my law school professor told me, "A good lawyer always answers a question with, 'Well, it depends.'" And so that's my answer to your question. I want to be clear that I have, from the beginning, been in strong support of building a new high school. I think it is what we owe our children. I have been in that building. I can't believe we've been asking our children to be educated in that building, and as an educator at a university, I understand that the students that come to me are unable to collaborate in the ways that the real world is going to expect of them, and so we are really required to provide our children a 21st-century education that prepares them for the world they're going to enter. And not only the children that we have now, but the children who are still going to be going through that building in 60 years, and so it's time for us to do what I believe is best for our children, right? So that's my personal position. The question of, "Am I willing to put the issue on the ballot?", that's a really more tricky question, because I don't think we know if the community is ready yet, and the reason I say that is because I don't necessarily think that the district has done a great job of communicating the 75 reasons I have for why we should build a new high school to the community. I meet people on a regular basis who are like, "I don't know. I don't understand. I haven't heard anything." And then when I have a conversation with them, they're like, "Well, why don't they just say that?" Right? And so I think we owe our community engagement in that process before we put it on the ballot, and if we did and it was not successful, it's just a clear evidence that we did not clearly communicate, because from my perspective, it's obvious that this is the logical next step.
In order for me to put it on the ballot, I want to have the best plan forward, and that means to me to have community involvement. I've said before that I would like to see the Ames Bicycle Coalition be part of the discussion. We need a community task force, because they are the experts in walkability and bikeability. We need to have a relationship with the city as far as what's going to happen with 16th Street. Is that going to be expanded? I want to have a very well-done study, so we can present the best plan to the community. That matters to me, because if the community is -- we have a beautiful community that is engaged, that wants to be informed, so we need to present the best plan for them. Now, if it doesn't, if the bond is presented and it fails, we're just going to have to go back to whether was the bond too high? Was that too much money? Because that door knocking, I have those concerns. People have brought those concerns to me. They feel that it's too much money, and if it fails, it's because we didn't explain that that money was needed. So I think we would have to do something, maybe present something with less, or we would have to just work on renovating the high school.
Okay. As of today, I can't say that I would put it on the ballot, but that doesn't mean I'm not going to change my opinion. Again, it depends. I'm hearing a lot from people who don't necessarily know how their taxes would not go up. They need to see a little bit more in the way of numbers. They need to see a little bit more in the reason why. Now, personally, I took the tour of the high school. I can see why. I can see all of that, but the public, it doesn't all know. There weren't a huge amount of people from the public that would be voting that were at the tours, so it needs to be advertised more. If we get more public people on board and they understand more about their taxes not going up, or about the condition of the high school and why it might not be feasible to remodel what's there, then I could see it passing in a bond vote. If a bond vote does not pass, I could see, I would like to see more creative ways of remodeling what is there, possibly get a second opinion on how to remodel what's there, what it would look like in the end, and the reason I say that is because one of the arguments that I've heard is that there are a lot of schools in Europe that are several hundred years old, and they keep those schools up to date, they keep them remodeled, and they treasure what they have for the bones within the school.
Let's go to a question from the audience. How would you transform the lack of communication, leadership, and gain needed trust between the Ames community and the Ames school board?
I think it's me?
Yeah.
Awesome. So I think that, so whoever wrote that question, thank you. That's a fantastic question. I believe that is really the bulk of the work that needs to be done here. I have sat in the chairs that you're sitting in for, you know, over a year watching the board meetings and have been surprised at what I've seen, as someone who makes her living as a communicator and building relationships and building trust, and so I have seen that. People ask me, "What's the biggest issue in the district?", and I have to say, "I feel like that's it." I feel like there is clearly been a breach of communication and trust between the board and the community. So the question is, well, we all know that. How do we fix it, right? And so I think leadership actually is the way out of this. What I have seen is we are, we need leadership that is able to conceptualize what it is we're actually trying to communicate, and then once we have that clear understanding, we need help, you know, collaboration in describing a message that will be available to diverse audiences. I know that there is a new media person that's just been hired, and he's doing a great job. I've noticed the post, but, you know, we have way more work to do to reach people, because not everybody has access to the internet, for example. Not everybody speaks English. So there are just many ways that we need to do that, and so the ways in changing the ways we understand what community means, what community we're trying to reach, and really earning the trust by being honest and transparent is a journey that I would love to see the board engage in with the community.
I always tell people when I'm
question. I believe that is really the bulk of the work that needs to be done here. I have sat in the chairs that you're sitting in for, you know, over a year, watching the board meetings and have been surprised at what I've seen, as someone who makes her living as a communicator, and building relationships and building trust. And so, I have seen that. People ask me, what's the biggest issue in the district? And I have to say, I feel like that's it. I feel like there is clearly been a breach of communication and trust between the board and the community. So, the question is, well, we all know that. How do we fix it, right? And so, I think leadership actually is the way out of this. What I have seen is we are, we need leadership that is able to conceptualize what it is we're actually trying to communicate. And then, once we have that clear understanding, we need help, you know, collaboration in describing a message that will be available to diverse audiences. I know that there is a new media person that's just been hired, and he's doing a great job. I've noticed the post. But, you know, we have way more work to do to reach people because not everybody has access to the internet, for example. Not everybody speaks English. So, there are just many ways that we need to do that. And so, the ways in changing the ways we understand what community means, what community we're trying to reach, and really earning the trust by being honest and transparent is a journey that I would love to see the board engage in with the community.
I would tell people, when I'm talking to them, they know me for 30 seconds, and I'm no one genuine. This is why I'm running, because I want to restore the relationship. I've been, I've sit here, I've sit here, and friends of mine have cried on that, where you're sitting, on the microphone. When they get here, it is, it's hard to talk to the board. It's, you get nervous, and you're talking, and you get passionate. You're talking about the most important thing in your life, and in our lives. You're talking about our children. It is important for me to know that I will acknowledge, that I will listen, and that things will get farther. So, we get to listen, but things will move forward. There is, at the end of the board meetings, there's items from the board. It would be nice for board members to say, I've met with teachers from, let's say, Sawyer, and this is what they're working on. And I think it would be great to make those times to say, we are in the community. I would like to visit the schools. I would like to visit with teachers. That's my leadership. I can provide that. I can be here for them. And also, I have relationships with different parts of the community that they're not represented, that they're afraid that they are here. And that is important to me, that they know that there's somebody that they can approach and that they can talk to.
I think that the public forums that happen before existing school board meetings is a really good start. We need to have more public forums. We need to look at different times, different days, see when more people are available. That, I think that would help a lot. We also can have surveys and ask people for opinions if they want to remain anonymous. If they're afraid of having their persona revealed in public, then have an anonymous survey. And also, I think we can do a lot more with the internet. We can have more meeting times scheduled. We can advertise the forums more, utilize Facebook, utilize all of the things that the new media person has been starting to ramp up on. If we advertise and engage via the internet, we can advertise our meetings, our forums, our surveys. We can do all kinds of things by thinking outside of the box and using new technology.
As far as communication goes, I, you know, I've been in every building multiple times each year and communicate with the teachers. And that one-on-one dialogue with teachers, and some administrators rattle off some ideas, bounce some ideas off people, and, like I mentioned earlier, see if they go and run with it and make a program out of it, has actually worked and worked well. As far as with the community, I've got a little, you know, a little perspective from the historical standpoint of that. And without a doubt, the last six years, this board has made huge strides in being one with our community. If you think of where it was six years ago, there was a bond vote in this town that only 24% of the people supported, I think. We had a board that was completely out of touch with what their community wanted. And so, yeah, we've got problems. We've got communication problems where we are not hitting all of the segments of our community. And we're taking some big strides to improve that with our media relations consultant. But we are actually a long ways ahead of where we were not all that long ago right now.
Okay, next question. The swimming pool. So, has the current board been indecisive on the issue of building a new swimming pool for the district? Should the district move forward without the city? Should it wait and join the city in its healthy life center concept? Sorry, I stumbled over that one there. And it's, Jimette, this is to you.
I don't think the board has been indecisive. I think they've been, I think it's, maybe they would have, they could have talked about it a while ago, but now they're weighing the options. They're talking amongst each others, among the board. Now, we, so the district has the money to build it. They don't have the money to operate it. And if they decide to operate it, it comes out of the general fund. The general fund is, 80% of that fund goes into teacher pay, benefits, and the rest is operational. So, it would be very hard for me to make the decision of operating a high school. That could cost $150,000, $200,000 from the general fund. And if we wait for the city. So, the city ordered their feasibility study, and the study is up on December. They're paying $100,000 for that study. I'm guessing it's going to be a good study, and very, I'd be willing to wait for that and see what that says. Because it would be very, it is too much money to take on ourselves. So, I would be willing to look for partnerships. So, for that question, really, I have more questions myself than I have answers. Because I don't, if we don't have the money to operate it, I think we have to look elsewhere.
I don't personally feel that the board is being indecisive about a pool. If the public is asking, though, maybe public perception is that there's a lack of decision there. So, there could be more communication on that front. I do not feel that we should move forward without the city. I think that would be very damaging to the relationship between the school board and the city. And that's a relationship that we need to grow and work on more than tearing it down. So, waiting and joining the city in the healthy life center concept could be a possibility. The more we work with the city, I think the more that we can accomplish together and not overlap on what we're providing for services for our children.
I don't think we've been indecisive in any ways. We certainly have been trying to be prudent with the money. And, you know, the ebb and flow back and forth on what decision to make here is simply that the school district needs a partner in this. We need a partner somewhere. You know, Ankeny had the luxury of partnering with DMAC, and it was a great thing for them to actually get a pool that they wanted. And we need a partner somewhere in this. The local swim club, the local swim community can become that partner. The idea was floated a few months ago of them coming up with an endowment in order to guarantee us the money that we would need in order to make sure that we do not increase our general fund operating budget for a pool. If they can come up with an endowment that provides us with an annual income off of that, guaranteeing that that money is there in perpetuity, then all of a sudden, we have a pool on our own grounds. We have a high school principal that's happy because he has his students right there on his grounds where he can oversee what they're doing. We are improving the athletic options for all of our students, and we're providing the special ed options that are part of the individual education plan for the special ed students at the high school. If we can get that partner and put it on our grounds, we should, but we have to have a partner.
So, I don't really care if the school district has been indecisive. There's an election coming up on Tuesday, and there's going to be a newly enpaneled board on Wednesday. So, you know, I am really forward-looking in my leadership. I'm not really interested in looking back at mistakes or, you know, second-guessing what people can, should, whatever. It doesn't help our children, right? We need to get to business. So, I'm going to answer your next question, which is, should the district move forward without the city? Again, I think that's a really limiting perspective because I don't think the city is the only partner, right? They're not the only girl at the dance. I think that what you're really getting at is, should the city move forward without partnership, whoever that partner might be? And I would say no, because I don't think it's what's in the best interest of our children. I think anytime we can find partners who want to help the day or the experience for our children better, that's great. I have met with several people as I've been doing this and heard people who are interested in partnering with the district. So, the city, I just spoke to a city council member, the city is actually interested in partnering with the district, as they say it. I met with the Ames Educational Foundation. They're interested in partnering with the district. I know there was someone here in the audience at one of the forums who's interested in creating a foundation to partner with it. And we're in such a resource-rich area, let's not limit ourselves to the city. And then, in terms of the healthy life center concept, that's just a discussion that continues to need to be had. I haven't heard anything that would suggest that's the way to go yet. It doesn't sound like it suits really anybody's needs. We're trying to jam a square peg into a round hole, but it's something to be figured out.
Let's go on to a question from an audience member who submitted it through Facebook, who's watching our live stream.
Let's see. Some technology right there.
There you go. Look at that.
The Facebook thing is crazy.
If elected, what will be your priorities for the district in the coming year? Pretty straightforward.
Is that me?
Yes.
Okay. My first priority is communication and working together. There, as it has been said earlier, there is a breakdown in communication between the board and the public. That is something that is being worked on. I think there's more that can be done with that. There's communication that needs to happen, like I said before, with the city. Relationship building can go a long ways towards any of the other issues. Because if you're working on it together, you can accomplish a lot more.
You know, if you write this back to, that every last thing is about kids, we've, I touched on it in my opening statement. I mean, we've got some very important decisions that are in process, and we need to see them through. That, it's very likely that this next year is going to be the superintendent search. Dr. Taylor has served this district very well. 26-year career, whatever, seven or eight years as superintendent. He, you know, he's said that, you know, it's possible this will be his last year. He's said that openly to his teachers. If it isn't this year, I'm guessing it'll be next year. But if it's this year, we've got an important superintendent search because the superintendent is the educational leader of the entire district, and that has a huge effect on the kids. We've got a decision to make on this high school that is going to affect kids for 50 or 60 years. And we've got a disparity gap plan put in place that is going to affect a lot of kids in a hurry. And so, those are all the things that I want to see through that we've already started in this next year.
So, I want to thank whoever asked that forward-looking question. I really appreciate it. That's a fantastic question. So, the way I would rank my priorities is really conceptualization. And what I mean by that is, as someone who is steeped in data-driven, evidence-based practices, the moment I sit down to work on a piece of peer-reviewed literature, what I must do is situate my thoughts in the broader context, right? I must proceed with an overall conceptualization that guides the work. And that's what I think really needs to happen. So, if you just look at it, we have a new superintendent to hire, a high school to build, a pool to figure out, and a huge racial and ethnic and other groups' proficiency gap. Those issues are not disparate. They're all related. And so, really having a conceptualization about how interrelated those issues are can help us design an effective path forward. And so, that is the priority, to get everybody looking at this issue from the same viewpoint so that we can speak with one voice, and then decide, well, if this is how we understand all of these things is related, how can we make a plan forward? What are the goals that we need to develop? What are the tools we need to get those goals? And so, that's really how you understand things in a really process-oriented, data-driven, evidence-based context. And that would be my priority.
My priority as an individual, it would be relationship building. Because we have all these discussions, we have the achievement gap, we have the pool, we have the high school, it is important for me that I have those relationships with people, with the community, and so that they can approach me, they can come to me, or I can go to them if questions arise. So, as an individual, for me, would be important to do relationship building and maintaining. And as far as the board, I think I would like us to acknowledge when things happen, maybe be, in essence, more proactive instead of reactive and foresee things. There are things right now that are happening. So, there's going to be big things. There's also, right now, there's a lot of issues with busing. In the past, it's been ongoing. And the bus situation, their contract is up in March 2018. So, that's going to be a big discussion. And I think we need to set the tone for that, for start right now, thinking about bidding. And so, those are my individual and board priorities. Thank you.
Okay. This next question is about the budget. If the legislator fails to provide adequate funding this next year and cuts half remade, where would you cut first? Yep, with Tim.
We won't be this next year. Make this easy on everybody for, you know, no matter how you look at it, either two or three of these people are going to be in their first year next year on this school board, and whatever it is. And that first year, having to make big budget cuts would be a difficult situation to come in without any background on what is going on and trying to learn all that and then make budget cuts. We're not going to make budget cuts this next year because enrollment is up. The elementary buildings that we have built, the way that we are marketing this school district, all of the being named as the best district in Iowa for the 50 or straight, every ranking system that you see says that this school district is the best or second-best school district in the entire state. So, people are flocking in here. Right now, it looks like the number is somewhere around 190 students that we've gained over last year. That may fluctuate a little bit. Even if we see a slight downtick in that by the time we get the official enrollment, we're still going to be up somewhere around 150. And there's no budget cuts next year. Not with increasing enrollment. So, let everybody get their feet under them. And then, if it happens the next year, everybody will know what they're getting themselves into, and we can worry about that then.
So, many people, as I've been campaigning, are surprised to learn what the school board does. So, the school board really has two goals, right? Primarily, it's responsible for setting the tone, the goals, the way in which the district will proceed to educate its children, right? It kind of sets these standards. But it also has a financial obligation. It has a responsibility to manage the budget. And I think, you know, as any of us who, you know, manage a household, understand, a lot of times, those things are in conflict. So, to answer your question, where would I cut? I don't know. Because I don't have any evidence to be making any kind of assumption, right? I don't have the data in front of me. As someone who is committed to making evidence-based decisions, that's what I need first, right? And so, that's the kind of main answer. But since I have time left, what I would also like to say is, I think you can't just look at, what I would recommend, if we are going to have a district that has a really, a vision for how we address all of these interrelated issues, you can't just say, well, this is what we spent last year, so let's spend it again. Hey, and we got a little bit more money. Let's go to Vegas, right? That's not how you manage a budget if you have a clear understanding of what your goals are. I believe at least, you know, some people sitting at this table said, we didn't have the money to hire an equity officer. Well, if we're managing our budget, and that's a long-term goal, then we do have the money if we're stocking it away. So, I guess there's just, there are things that I think we need to understand about our budget and the way we manage our money, and just be more mindful about the things that we want to do if we have an overarching conceptualization guiding our actions.
That's a good question. Things are looking, they're looking rough. It has happened before. I believe in 2012 is when we had no increase, that we didn't receive any money from the state. I don't know. I don't know. Right now, I don't know. I would not, because I'm not privy to that information. I would need to, I would assume that when things like that happened, the administration brings you the documentation. And then, so it's a long study. So, I could not pick anything. I love everything we're doing. So, that I don't know.
I would like to use my process improvement experience to look at how processes are being done, where money is going, and if there are ways that we can save money on other things. I'm glad that Tim said we're not going to have to make budget cuts. Thank you. But that doesn't mean that we can't look for ways to save money in other ways. Because in the future, we may have to make budget cuts. So, I definitely want to do, you know, cost analyses and look at how everything is being done currently. Because, just because, like Monique said, just because it's being done a certain way right now doesn't mean that that's how it has to be going forward. Processes should always be in flux.
Looking at the clock, we have time for one more question, and then we'll open it up for your closing statements. You're not going to see this question pop on your screen, by the way. This is about-
This is about collective bargaining. With limited collective bargaining in place now, how would you maintain the districts, or how should the district, what would you do to keep the district competitive and to attract and retain the best talent in a time of tight budgets? Monique, I believe we start with you.
So one of the things that the candidates have to do kind of behind the scenes is we have to answer a bunch of surveys. And so one of the surveys we received was from the Ames Education Association. It's an association of teachers, and this was one of the questions they asked, right? So collective bargaining is very much on the minds of our teachers here in the district. And I think we need to be really mindful about the conditions that are out of our control, right? The state, because of the way government works, the state is really creating a financial environment that the district must function in. And that's really just, that's the reality. And I don't necessarily know if anybody wants to be in that position, it's just where we are. And so there are just some realities that we must face. What I would love to see is true dialogue, especially around something as sensitive as this. Because what I can do and what my thoughts are may be completely unrelated to the unintended consequences of those good, you know, those good ideas in the reality of the life of a teacher. And so what I would love to see is us sit down, the board, the administration, the representatives, the Ames Education Association, teachers, staff, right? There are other people involved in this, really sitting down and figuring out, what are the things that would make you happy in this district? Because if we understand all these issues as being related, if we want to tackle the serious issues we have, we must have happy teachers, right? We need teacher retention, because not having all that turnover helps our students. And finally, just in terms of respecting these people who are working for our children, they deserve to earn a living wage. They deserve to have health insurance. It's really what's required in the modern era.
I want teachers to know that if I make it to the board, they will have an advocate in me. They are in the front lines. They, they're, and it's not, it goes beyond just teaching. I witnessed a teacher on her lunch break go in and bought a pair of shoes for a student. So that's, I see it. I mean, the schools, I see it day-to-day, what valuable resources we have, and we're so fortunate to have each one of them. So I always want them to have a seat at the table. And if we're talking about thinking in the future, if Dr. Taylor retires, I mean, he's done a great job working with the teachers and with the union, the teachers' union. If I'm on the table, and I'm part of the board, and I happen to be hiring a new superintendent when Dr. Taylor retires, I would want, that would be a qualifying thing for me, that this new superintendent wants to collaborate, continues to collaborate, and have the teachers in mind and have them at the table. That is important. They are our greatest resources, and they need to know it. They need to know that they're valued, that they're heard. We need to know what the climate in each building is. I would be very interested if I become a board member. I would like to visit, every month, I would like to visit a different school. I would like to sit with the teachers and talk to them. That matters. I see firsthand what they do, and I really, really appreciate it.
Our district employees and our teachers need to feel valued, validated, and secure. The current contract should be a baseline, a minimum, for what they should get going forward. If we want to attract or keep our teachers, we need to look at what desired states and districts do to retain their teachers. I know that, I'm a state employee, I have experienced firsthand what collective bargaining has done for our state. And I have two siblings that were public teachers in Wisconsin when collective bargaining changed up there. I do not want this to turn into what happened in Wisconsin. One of my siblings retired from the state of Minnesota, and the other one now works for a parochial school because he's treated better there. I have friends that left the state of Wisconsin to teach in other states because they just couldn't handle what was going on there anymore. So we need to make sure that our teachers do feel secure and feel like they are getting what they need going forward. I have told all of the teachers and all of the staff that I've talked to that I want to be someone that they feel is approachable and that they can come to without repercussions. I would be happy to listen to suggestions from any of them for going forward.
Yeah, this wasn't a situation that any school board in the state asked for. It was a situation that was thrust on everybody pretty unexpectedly, and we've all taken steps to try to ensure the security of our teachers. I mean, you know, great thing that the board did was go into special session, everybody gave up their night, and, you know, unexpectedly with just a few days' warning, because if we didn't approve a two-year contract or five-year contract or whatever we were going to give the teachers, and the governor had signed that collective bargaining law, whatever contract would have been voided. We had to get our contracts signed, and so we had to come into special session and get a two-year contract approved, just to give our teachers some time to wrap their heads around what had just happened and where they need to go in order to go forward. For me, this is, I mean, it is a huge game changer. If we get, we may need to actually bring some board members into the negotiations now. This is a big enough game changer. Ames has a long history of the superintendent and the teachers' union negotiating that contract one-on-one, rather than bringing the board into it. This is a big enough game changer, we may have to do that. I've been on the negotiations team for two out of the three school districts that I was employed by, and so I was on the teacher's side of that negotiation, and I think I'd bring some fresh light to that if we do go that route.
Thank you. All right, that's all the questions for tonight. We're going to now go, and you have a one-minute closing statement. Jemet, you are first.
One minute. Like I said earlier, I was born in Santiago, Chile. I was born in race and dictatorship. I know what it is not to have a voice. I know, I was also born in a chaotic childhood. We struggled with poverty, single mother of three children. I know what it is to be that child, that pretends that nothing is wrong, that nothing is, and it just sits there and hide. And I want to represent that part of our community that exists, that is a hidden community. But I also want to represent everybody, because who I am, I have, I hold space in different silos, and I want to bring that to the board. It matters to me that I do this for Ames. I am an immigrant. I came here 17 years ago, and now I'm sitting with this amazing candidate, and I'm a school candidate. It's, sometimes I think about it, and it's crazy, but I love Ames. Ames has loved me, has welcomed me, empowered me, and I'm ready for this. I think this is what my calling is. So I would love your vote on September 12. Thank you.
And you'll have a minute 30, because I went over on time.
Oh, I would have told that story!
You'll have a minute 30 now, so I, just to make it fair. Gina.
I'm not very wordy, so I don't know if I'll take up a minute 30. My biggest, the biggest thing that I want to do is be an active listener. I want to be someone that you can approach, that you can talk to without any fear. I may use the situation as an example, but I will never say your name. I won't, I won't do that. I know what it's like to work in a place where it could be scary to actually speak your mind or to bring up issues. I've been in that situation before. I don't want anyone to continue to be in that situation now if they already are. I grew up in a house where my dad built houses, and he did construction, he was an electrician, and the housing market died in the mid-'80s. Both of my parents went back to school, they graduated from college the same year I graduated from high school. I have a picture of all of us together in our caps and gowns. It was really, really awesome. So I've kind of been on both sides of it, where I've been in a house where we had plenty of money, and then everything got ripped out from under us, and we had to really struggle. So I've been there, I understand what it's like, and I want to be there for everyone. Thank you.
You know, the very first meeting that I was supposed to go to, that I came to four years ago, was one of the first meetings that Dan Wooden missed as a board member in this school district. And Dan was famous for just making sure that everybody knew that schools are all about kids. He said it at every board meeting. He talked, he lived that ideal. I think as a board, we have been living that ideal for the last few years, and I believe we're going to continue that. I do think of a board as this living thing, so whoever's up here next year is going to continue to live that. School boards have to be all about the kids. We've talked about the important decisions that are going to be made, but this is the best school district in the state, but the thing that you have to keep in mind, if you went online, you hear a lot of negative things about this, about Ames and about the Ames schools. If all you did was read Facebook posts, you'd think we have the worst school district in the state and that we should be shut down. It's never as bad as what some people are going to say, and we're never as good as what the accolades say. We have room for improvement in this school district, even if we are the best school district in the state. We're not graduating 100%. Let's get there. We have things to improve, and we're going to keep moving in that direction.
So, you know, I can really tell you what I want, but what I hope is, I've actually demonstrated what I'm going to communicate now. I hope that I've demonstrated that I have the educational experience that would make me a good board member. I hope that I've demonstrated that I have the professional expertise that can actually be helpful in the job that I'm asking you to give me. I hope that I've demonstrated a clarity of vision that would be a positive impact on the children, families, and staff in our district. When I started running about nine months ago, somebody told me at a meeting, they said, "You will never be the same. You're going to learn a lot about yourself through the process, and it's going to be really transformative and life-changing," and that's been incredibly true. And the journey has really, in some ways, taken me full circle. What I would say is that I've never been more me. I've never been more free to be more me than I am right now. And if you haven't sensed it yet, what you hopefully can tell is that I'm honest. You're going to ask me a question, I'm going to tell you the truth. I'm going to tell you what I think. I hope that you see that I act with integrity, that I'm ethical, that I am collaborative, and that leadership is important to me, and that I understand the very important role and role models that we're serving for our children. That's an incredibly meaningful responsibility for me. So if you would honor me with your vote on September the 12th, I would really appreciate it. And I want to thank you all in the Ames Tribune for coming out tonight and being a part of the process. It's actually really incredibly meaningful for all of us. Thank you.
All right. I want to thank all the candidates coming out, and I want to thank the audience for coming out and those tuning in and viewing via the web. But I know it's not easy to be on the hot seat, per se, but I appreciate your time and your honesty in answering these questions. There will be a recap in tomorrow's paper. I encourage everyone to pick that up. And main thing, I want to remind everyone to get out and vote. That's where the magic happens, so let's get out and vote and make our voices heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1766.76][1766.76]